We'll open the meeting of April 9, 2018. Everybody in attendance. Let's do the minutes first, let's look at them real quick. Notice a public hearing, here we go. The minutes of March 12, 2018. Any changes, corrections, deletions, additions? Anybody have any corrections? Do you want to find out with the solar array at Zero River Street? Is that on the corner?
What's that?
The, I just noticed in the...
It's on the cellar step?
Yeah, the solar array.
It's centered just a little bit.
It was what?
Yeah, it's centered a little bit.
River in Thompson?
Right. I think you know where the flying field is.
Yeah.
Like that's where it's sitting.
Alright, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of March 12, 2018.
Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, the minutes of March 12, 2018 are accepted as per court. How about some correspondence, what are we doing? 320, 2018, Deutsch William letter petition 823 with amended plan delivered to court regarding Gordon Andrews versus the zoning board, building inspector, the party trust and whatnot.
She asked for petition 823 for amended sway, a set of amended plans, so I sent those to her.
You sent them?
Uh huh.
Okay.
She should be with them before.
It is subsequent order of March 6, 2000, enclosed here as a filing in reference to the above titled action. Please find two copies of the zoning board's appeals, a petition 823, along with the amended plan referred to therein. We have forwarded two copies, one for docking, one for Judge Vay's convenience. Should he desire an additional copy, we have also sent this correspondence and these documents to counsel by first class in electronic mail today. Thank you for your attention in this matter. Should we have any questions or comments regarding the foregoing, please do not hesitate to contact me, Kimberly Salam. So we're all good with that?
Uh huh.
Alright, bingo.
So they will do the copy?
What's that? It's just copies of...
The court just ordered copies of the petition 823 for amended sway.
Cleaning board memo and plan form A distribution, map 111 lot 4C, 4C-1, 235 South Street. What are we doing with this? Please find attached copies. Oh, it's just for a review on a form A? What is it? What are they doing, any idea? Well, it's from the planning board. South Street.
They have to build a house lot?
Looks like two. 4C-1 and 4C-2. Oh, existing house.
Right.
Yeah. Where is that?
The first street comes out, I hear, but I hate Wood Street, it's about over here, so alright.
Oh. It's just after where the street on the right.
Do you have a power lines there?
Yeah, probably before the power lines. But on the left. Isn't there a, is a module home down there now, I think? For form A, if anybody wants to take a look at it. John Clark, whoa. Alright.
Do you want to get to the first?
First petition. Okay, petition number 569 Ronald and Sherry McLeod, 109 Home Street, regarding an in-law apartment. Ronald de Carol McLeod, dear Mr. and Mrs. McLeod, this is a letter dated April 15, 2003, petition 569. The meeting, the zoning board of appeals voted to grant petition for a special permit for an in-law apartment to be situated at 109.
That's their original, um, 2003. But you have their affidavit in there.
I did see that in here. McLeod here. This is the renewal or the review?
Still no.
Okay. Sherry McLeod or Ronald McLeod?
Sherry McLeod.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Uh, you put down here on your renewal application that the owner continues to occupy either as the principal residence or the in-law? Yes?
My dad does, my mom is deceased.
Okay. And the principal residence of the in-law continued to share major utilities as stated in the original decision letter? Electric, gas, cable, yes?
Yes.
Hasn't changed this?
Nope.
And there have been no changes made to the in-law apartment since the last renewal and or the original granting of the original special permit?
That's correct.
And the last one, the person who's related to the owner occupant of the existing single-family dwelling is related by blood or marriage?
I'm a daughter.
That's the one.
He has the in-law, I have the primary house.
Okay. Uh, I'll accept a motion regarding the renewal of petition number 569.
Uh, I'll make a motion to renew petition 569.
How about with the same conditions?
Yeah, with the same conditions under the letter of April 15, 2003.
Is that okay with you? Nothing's changed, everything's good?
Yep.
You know, you can certainly meet those requirements of the petitions, awesome. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Would any members of the board feel it's necessary to go out and take a look at the, or review the property? Or everybody's pretty much familiar with it? Okay, I'll take a vote on petition number 569 for the renewal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, aye. You're good.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, 715, petition Velma?
Velma, yeah.
Segal, 97 Circus Street, the in-law renewal. Hi, how are you?
Uh, okay, nothing's changed. I have my grandson in GED, I think my daughter's related because she wants to be in the primary house and we have our problems. I have a problem with her husband, I can't let him back in. So it's been delayed, I want to see if you'll grant me more extensions.
To continue it?
Yeah.
How about Mr. Vinson, can he met with the, can he met with the building inspector?
Yeah, yeah, he's my neighbor across the street.
Right.
Uh, he's a friend, he's just...
But he met with Mr. Picarelli, the building inspector?
Yeah.
To determine what you need to do, what you need the requirements to be?
But the requirements I'm going to do, but I am delayed. My grandson is required by me to get his GED. And I want him in my home, I want to send him to trade school up here because he wants to be a plumber. And, but he needs the GED to get started. And I'm required that he get the GED before it comes.
So what kind of, uh... Have you talked to the building inspector about it? I mean, what kind of continuance are you looking for?
I don't know what, he's... The high school counselor is in a separate building than where he would take his GED.
And this is where, what state?
It's in West Virginia, and they had a school strike down there and had to lay things and then, you know, he's not getting the appointment to get the GED yet. He can't, if they're giving the information to my daughter, she's not passing it to him. Because she wants back in my house. And that's a no.
Alright.
Who lives in the house now? Who lives in the house now?
I'm in the house, I'm in the in-law and I have people that I've known their whole lives in the other side. And there's a girl trying to get her child back from the grandparents. She needs a place of residence. I lived with her grandmother in the past and I've known her father since he was four, I've known her her whole life. Yeah, she's living there at the moment. But my daughter requires her to get out and for my daughter to come in.
Who owns the house?
My house was made in '76, I've been there since '85.
So you're the, your name is on the deed?
I've been there since '85, yeah.
Your name is on the deed, you're the owner of the house?
I'm the owner.
What did, what have we heard from the building inspector on this?
Well, I think at this point she would need to reapply once things are, she makes some changes for a new petition, it would be a whole new petition.
Right, because we can't continue it anymore?
I mean, it's...
So she can withdraw without prejudice?
She did withdraw.
She did withdraw?
She did withdraw.
I just need the paperwork to redo it and I'll try to get it done when I've talked to my grandson.
You need the paperwork to do what?
I'll try to get, you know, legal with the town, it's, you know, my goal is that I can't do it without things going my way and they haven't.
Alright.
So the ultimate thing, your grandson is going to live in the apartment?
In the main house.
Yeah, my grandson is going to live there.
In the main house or the apartment?
In the main house, I have a one-bedroom in the in-law, so he'd live in the main house.
Do you know when that will be or you don't know?
I thought it would be January, it isn't.
Fox Street?
And he hasn't passed his testing yet.
So, so nobody's telling you you can't live, I want to just be, like, I don't... You're more than welcome to live in the house, we haven't, we're not telling you you can't live there or anything like that.
Yeah, I own the house, I know I can live there.
I think the issue is...
To have my kitchen.
Either the kitchen, right, which we talked about.
And I, I like, you know, the people who live in my home are early twenties, I'm 68. I don't want to be with them constantly, you know?
Right, so like, I think the position that we're in is, so the bylaws are pretty clear.
Yeah, I know.
Um, so you can live in the house and the whole house, but you can't have a tenant unless that tenant is a immediate family member.
Yeah.
So the issue is not with you in the house, the issue is with the tenant in the house who's now currently there and has been from the minute they started living there against the bylaws.
That's not that long, I mean, it's a few months. But it's been a few months.
Since November, right?
Uh huh.
Since November, right?
A little bit before that, since October, September, October.
Well, I know she and her representative have met with Bob Picarelli to try to remedy the situation.
I don't have a remedy yet, but I do think that I will have one.
The question is how long, you know?
I know. I, I have my rules.
Ken, point it.
And, oh, hi Ken.
I guess the, I guess the reality is, there's nothing for us to vote on if she withdrew it.
Right.
So the issue is on Rob.
Yeah, I got out.
Whether or not he's beginning to...
She's calling here for information?
Yeah, I just headed down.
Does she call in here for information tonight?
Maybe.
But I mean, I guess at this point, being in violation, it's not us, it would be Rob and why he decides to start.
Are you collecting rent?
What is it?
Are you collecting rent?
Five hundred a month and I pay twenty-two just for the mortgage.
So you're using it as an income? You're using it as an income?
No, no, it's, they're, a small assistance on a part of the mortgage and it's almost nothing.
Ken, what'd you find out when you talked to the building inspector?
Uh, I didn't know anything about tonight's meeting, I didn't get a copy of anything. So when I came in last week, there's no one here, so I wanted, just to get you so I know why I'm here. So I went next door because Kim Roy was there, so I was talking with her and she said, "Is there anything I can help you for next door?" And I says, "No, I just stopped in to see someone." And then the building inspector got involved and...
Right.
He was telling me about, so he gave me the note that tonight was the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did get it out that I should be here.
Did you talk to him in length about how she was going to be able to comply with the zoning?
No, I didn't get in involved with him at all because as far as I know, he was just supposed to be talking with the board here.
Yeah. We were just supposed to show up here. And not, but it wasn't official.
But to show up here for what purpose? You don't have an application in front of us. You withdrew your application.
I'm going to need an application, a new one.
And you're going to reapply?
Yeah.
Did you meet with the building inspector?
Not yet, I work odd hours, I don't get out, I don't get home until seven o'clock at night.
Well, Kenny, why don't you make an appointment to meet with Rob Picarelli, the building inspector? Find out exactly what she has, Emma has to do to comply with the current zoning. What exactly she needs to do as far as changes, additions, deletions at the house. A time period has to be somehow determined as to when compliance can resolve. You know, uh... I don't know what else to tell you. He's the zoning enforcement agent, he's the building inspector. The problem is...
Well, I thought everything was being done here by the zoning board of appeals. I didn't know the building inspector was even involved.
Well, he's the zoning enforcement officer.
Yeah, he's the zoning enforcement officer. We don't enforce zoning, we, you know, make the determinations, it's the board, but if she's in violation of the zoning bylaws regarding an in-law apartment, she has to comply with the current zoning. I would imagine he gave you a copy of...
What he did, he ran off some copies, but I didn't go into it because I didn't know we have copies. This is that year, December 11 was the copy of the letter he gave me.
Yeah.
Do you have copy, that new thing that I can read?
This is what I sent to each one of them and I sent to you now.
But this, I thought this came from you, the board here.
It does, but Kenny, this doesn't list the necessary things in order to comply with zoning. It's in the zoning bylaws. It's listed, it'll give you A, B, C, D, and E, what she has to do in order to comply with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax.
So what are we doing here then?
Uh, well, unless, I don't know, there was no application in front of us, Ken. If she withdrew her application.
I was told to come here tonight to meet with you.
Right, to update you.
I had nothing to do with the board at the time.
I didn't know if I could make it or not.
Do we have a copy of the...
The original, so...
Yeah, please.
Yeah.
Man, I don't, I don't mind going back to him and finding out what it is. How I even got involved with this is, uh, Mrs. Segal asked me if I would sit in with her because she had a problem with the town that they were going to take a stove out. So I said, "Well, I don't know anything about that, if they can take a stove out, but I'd be glad to come down here and if you don't understand anything, I'll try to help you." That's how I got involved. I don't know what the violations are or I only live in that across the street.
What the violations is, that I don't have any family member in my home besides me in the main home.
Did you explain why?
Yeah.
Okay, so you understand, well, who'd you explain it to, the area, the building sector?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you explained the reason why and how close relationship she has with the woman that's living there, but bottom line, our bylaw says it has to be a blood relative by, a blood relative or by marriage. A relative has to be living in the in-law apartment. And that's not what she has, Kenny, she has a tenant.
Right.
There's a tenant that's renting the house or the rooms that are over there. That's not an in-law apartment. So in order to have an in-law apartment by definition, you have to comply with what the zoning bylaws say. And that means there's only a specific percentage of the main house. There has to be, all the gas, the electric, all the utilities have to be together, they can't be separate. Can't be one for the, a separate meter, for example, for the in-law apartment and then a separate meter for the main house that's being rented out. Can't do that, that makes it a two-family house.
I don't, I have one meter.
Okay, I'm just saying that's just one of many things that are listed. We're going to put together a list of all the requirements of an in-law apartment. And one happens, and that's how we got involved with her grandson down in Kentucky, because it...
West Virginia.
Because it has to be in a relationship, it's an in-law apartment, it's not a duplex. It's not a rental unit, it's an in-law apartment.
Well, that I know from being across the street, but I, from what Val has told me that because of what's happened in the past and I think I don't, I don't know what's happened in the past on that house. But finally she got that house straightened out and to be able to keep the house without the sound of...
Kenny, it's not straightened out if she has a duplex. It's not, it's not an in-law apartment, it's not straightened out, you know?
I consider it one home and I don't consider it rent, I consider it room and board. Because it's very little, it doesn't, it's not even a, a part of what I pay.
Unfortunately, it doesn't matter if you're collecting rent, it has, the tenant who's living in that separate area needs to...
Well, this is what you, this is what you explained to him, you said, about Cameron?
No, Devin.
No, the fellow that was coming up when he graduated.
Oh, Cameron, yeah, my grandson's coming.
And he will be, he's about the only one left on the family because of what's happened in the past.
But the also point too is knowing needs to live there, like that's...
Well, it takes time, I mean, you don't, you don't...
No, no, I mean like, she doesn't have to have, she doesn't have to have that filled, is the point.
She is going to have a family member in there.
Well, I'm going to have to in very near future, but it's...
I think that...
One of my grandsons will go to college in this area, but he's another year, a year out before he starts college.
Do you have a timeframe that you could definitely say this is when you're going to be?
It's been gone since November.
I mean, it's not, it's not...
Alright, my daughter, my daughter requested, she said, "I want to move back in your house without the people there." And my husband, while in Quincy, that would last an hour, I know my daughter, they say they'll do something and I don't ever...
Okay, your permit that was granted in December 11, 2002. The permit was granted due to the fact that the project, I'm reading from them. Due to the fact that the project meets all the criteria of the bylaw for the in-law apartments. So you met all the requirements on December 11, 2002.
Yes.
This project does not derogate from the intent of the bylaw and is not detrimental to the neighborhood at this site. The project has shared a common entrance, shared utilities, water, electric, septic, shared living space, the family room, and meets the requirements of the Halifax zoning bylaws for the in-law apartments. So as of December of 2002, you met the requirements.
Yes, I...
Since December of 2002, there has to be, have been changes made so that you still, as conditions for granting the special permit for the in-law apartment are as follows. There are, there will be a 10-foot open archway between the main house and the in-law apartment. Is there one?
There is a door there.
Is there a 10-foot open archway between the main house and the in-law apartment?
Yes, but there is a door.
So you're not going to answer my question?
There is an opening up there, yes.
So there is an 10-foot open archway?
It's always open.
The in-law apartment will share all utilities including the heating system, you said that's true. The board shall be notified if the in-law apartment is no longer needed. The special permit for the in-law apartment is granted for a period of five years. Upon expiration of the permit, the petition is to come back before the board can apply for an extension. If any changes in tenancy takes place, the applicant is to come back for review. The special permit is not transferable. The in-law apartment kitchen appliances are to be removed when no longer occupied by a family member.
Right.
The special permit was granted based on the plans and the testimony presented at the hearing. Any changes from that presented and approved must be brought back to the zoning board of appeals.
Alright, in 2002, my daughter, her fiance and her two young girls lived there. My husband and my grandson, my grandson lived next door, my husband lived with me.
So you guys were in the main house and they were in the in-law? Or was it the other way around?
My youngest daughter, my youngest daughter.
What, was in the main house?
Yeah, but she died.
And you were in the in-law?
About two years ago this month.
Or she was in the in-law?
She was in the main, I was in the in-law.
You and your husband at the time in 2002?
Two years ago this month, she died. And my husband died, my grandson died. Everybody who lived there apart from me died. Except the grandchildren, they were adopted outside of their family.
Well, the only reason then that the building inspector would be involved is if the zoning board on renewing the permit, Ken, found that she didn't comply with the conditions that she agreed to back in, when the permit was issued back in 2002. Uh, where he is the zoning enforcement agent, he would be the one that would go to the house, examine the house and say, "Yes, you comply, no, you do not," one or the other. He'd report back to the board and say, "Yes, she complies with all the, all the things, so therefore the board can renew the permit," or just the opposite. And what happens is that's what we have. We have non-compliance of the zoning bylaws.
So who modified the building inspector then?
Me, I had to renew it.
Not here?
No, I had to renew it.
That's why I never gotten anything from here about that.
No, no, it was a renewal that, and I didn't meet all the criteria then.
What's that?
Can you read us a letter that he was coming in to represent?
Yeah, you gave us a letter.
At one of our meetings.
You gave us a handwritten letter that said that you were...
I came to, originally I came over and I talked to your secretary because...
Oh, but not a meeting, not a meeting?
Not a meeting, no, because I asked me if I would go with her because sometimes she doesn't understand a lot of things. And she said, "You've been with the boards, you know most people, maybe you could help me understand." So I said, "No, I don't mind going with you," and that's how I got into it.
Alright, Ken, let's do this. Ken, why don't you meet with the building inspector himself? Okay, find out exactly what...
I don't have time for that.
What's that?
Because of my work schedule, I just...
Right.
No, I can, I can...
He can do that.
Okay.
And find out exactly, in order to make this compliant, you know, find out what you have to, what she has to do.
Right.
And then upon that, in those circumstances and whatnot, we'll we'll get a letter back from the zoning enforcement agent in regards to what condition the place is in and what has to be done in order to comply. Why don't we start from there and then you'll have to reapply and we'll take it from there. I don't know what else to do.
Yeah, I spoke to my grandson over the weekend and he said he was trying to get an appointment.
Okay, when are you going to be able to meet with Bob, Rob Picarelli, the building inspector? I want to send him a letter and say expect him to meet with you within a week, within two weeks.
Oh, I can do it sometime this week for that matter.
Alright.
I only have one meeting tomorrow, other than that...
Alright, well, you can give his office a call, find out when the best time is to meet with him and just sit down and find out...
I'm sure when evening, maybe you should just stop in and see him.
Yeah, and take it from there. And then we'll hear back from him and we'll find out when we have to reapply and see what else we can do.
Alright, I did speak to my grandson and he said he would make an effort to do that on his own, he's 19, almost 20.
Do an effort to do what on the zone?
To get his GED and then I would fly him up immediately and it was so...
Okay, why don't we do that, we'll dictate a letter on it.
But that might take a couple weeks for him to get that, get the results.
Alright, great, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Do we need to make any kind of...
Okay.
You're standing?
No, we don't have a petition in front of us. I think we will dictate a letter out to Mr. Picarelli at that point. Take it from there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
How are you? Good, how are you?
Good, what's going on?
I was just in for something that came earlier in the agenda, it was the email from Alan from...
It hasn't come up yet, actually.
We haven't quite got to that yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were past that.
No, we have to skip ahead through the appointment.
I'm sorry.
We went to the appointment.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Oh, you've still got another three or four to go.
I thought you were ready to adjourn.
Uh, informal discussion, 7:30. Listen up, Richard Gilk, is he coming in, is he...
He's supposed to be coming, um, he wants to talk to you guys about...
There he is, right there.
Right on time.
Richard?
How are you?
What's going on?
Well, we're looking to...
Oh, you can't say hi, how you doing, how you doing?
We're looking to make a, you know, we're... We're looking to make a, with, you know, with the in-laws.
On 12th?
Yeah, we're making, looking to make that bigger, but more conforming. And he wants to put a two-car garage in. He has a two-car garage now that's roughly eight inches from the street.
Eight inches from the street?
Inches. Which we want to tear down.
Yeah.
Because his driveway is on the opposite side on 12th Avenue. His garage is on Langley Street right now.
All right.
And he's looking to put up a two-car garage with a room above it in a breezeway, ten-way, whatever, 10-foot breezeway into the house. What I'm asking, I guess, is if you would even entertain the thought of a side lot line setback of six feet.
As opposed to eight inches?
No, as opposed to the 30-foot what we're supposed to have. The eight-inch one, we want to tear down.
Yeah. But it's the same piece of property?
Rebuilding it.
Yeah, it's the same piece of property.
Yes, that's good, the one's gonna go. He's got a septic plan with him that shows all the buildings to look at it.
Yeah.
But I didn't know if we needed.
Just a separate lot?
We're rebuilding ours, all on the same lot.
It's all on the same lot?
What I'd wanna do is get rid of my old, ill-appointed garage that's fallen down and build a big family room off the new garage, even driveway.
Attached to the house?
Yes, by the breezeway.
Six inches off the road? Eight inches, whatever. Oh, okay.
So what I'm looking to do is put a garage here. This is where my garage is now.
And how far off the side lot line are you looking?
It will be about 6 feet.
And how about, how about from, from 12th?
Will be seven, will be setback further than the house behind it, and we'll be the start of it. The problem is there'll be a two-story wall here, 30 feet deep.
Two-story wall, 30 feet deep?
Who asked if I have a room over there?
The house around next to our, over here?
Yes.
There is a house, but it's hugging the other side of the wall. And there's also, I believe, a row of trees there.
This existing will come down?
Hundred percent, yes. If I don't take it down.
You're not increasing the footprint of the existing house down?
No, no, just the breezeway.
How far is the house off the 12th Ave?
About 15 feet.
15?
So the garage would be 20 or so, 20, 25?
Actually about 20, but the lot line is about 15, do you know what I mean? I was planning on matching the front of the house with the garage, but I have no problem bringing it back about, I think, five feet.
Behind the chimney?
Behind the chimney. Does any kind of panel drive or anything, what I wanna do? So this would come back. And, and then this would be the breezeway here.
And this would go how far off this lot?
This would be six foot.
So part of the garage is actually gonna be in line with the front of the house?
I would like to, just for aesthetics, but like I said, I have no problem bringing it back.
How, how deep is it right now, what do you plan on going?
It would be 25 this way and 30 this way.
How big's the house?
44 by 24 maybe? 44 by 28. 28. 44 this way, 28 this way. Single story. The reason we're not going up on the house is because half the foundation on that house was built with fieldstone. Yeah, it's poured concrete.
Doesn't the project have to be a percentage of the first floor of the street?
It's like, actually.
How much over is that?
What's that?
The.
Garage?
The garage has to be.
It's 88, I don't guess that.
A certain percentage of the first floor living space? And that, you're almost duplicating it pretty darn close. You'd have to look that up according to the.
He has living space in two floors.
So are you good, you'd have to get a variance for that?
Yes, I understand.
How far away is the house?
From the other house?
Yeah, from proposed garage. It's on this side here. You say it's on this side or?
You said it's right.
Yeah. How, how off the lot line is it?
How far are we here with?
Oh, it's probably 60. I'd say 50 to 60 feet. His house hugs the other lot line.
So you wouldn't be increasing the non-conformity on, on the, well, that's actually a frontage. Because you have two frontages where you have.
Right.
One on Ling and one on, on 12th.
Eliminating one.
You're, you're limiting the.
More non-conforming, having more conformity. How big's the lot? Oh, boy. I want to say, I have measurements.
It might be on there, is it?
It's 106 in the front, what, on 12th Avenue?
100, yeah.
10 by 15 feet.
Uh, the other question is, what's the garage gonna be used for? Nothing with the business, no commercial?
No.
No?
He had a work truck, but that won't be in there. I have a pull-out, platter, slingshot.
So it's strictly for your own personal vehicles?
Yeah, that and my wife's, well, girlfriend.
And the upstairs?
The upstairs, that's gonna be a family room.
Bathroom, water?
There'll be.
No water.
No plumbing. The heat and air conditioning will be done by a central air conditioning unit or a heat pump rather, so I don't have to do any plumbing.
No bedrooms?
No, no bedrooms.
Your daily drivers will be parked in the garage?
It's.
Where are off the street?
One, one day will be, one of them. It's like a high-end motorcycle. So I'm not really a daily driver.
Right, but you're on the daily drivers?
Yeah, yeah, they won't be in the street, no.
And the, and the truck won't be in the street?
No, I, I have room in front of the garage to fit the vehicles. He's driving out on 12th Avenue.
So what, you just give up the scene? Would we just throw it out there?
Yeah, I just, what, my concern was, you know, from when I used to be on the board, was that one lot line and how much area it would take facing someone else's house. Plus, there is a tree line there. It's not a heavy tree line, but there is trees there.
What's the address? Maybe they shouldn't have to be cut down?
Huh? No, what I'm saying, the block, you, for him to what?
What is the address?
17 12th Avenue.
And also, when I did the, when I did the house across the street and I moved the driveway and the garage on that house, the fire department changed my address because my driveway was on one side and the house address was on the other side. And that's what I'm wondering if they're ever gonna do that to this house because he's got a driveway on one side and his garage is on the other side. I said it confuses the EMTs.
If you want to talk to your neighbors all about the situation.
One name?
The property on the backside of me is abandoned. These people just put up a for sale sign. The old lady that lives here, I haven't talked to at all. The guy was diagonal, he's fine with it. I never see these people unless it's my brother's house.
So he's a cancer. So what have we got, three variances? One for the size, one for each lot size?
One for the size, one for the side setback, one for the front setback.
Was it?
And the side.
Front, I believe.
Right. I don't know if we're.
Is it closer than the house already is to, to, where's that, 12th?
No.
No, this is only eight inches to the property line, this would be six feet.
They probably wouldn't need a variance for the 12th Ave. Because they're already, it's a, they're not increasing the non-conformity.
Sure they are.
That's where we're building.
Yeah.
The house is.
No, 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 right here, but right here, you, it'd have to be 50 feet off the front.
Right, that's already the area within that, right?
Not on the new construction?
Yeah. I don't know, maybe some, probably won't happen.
You'd need to vary that, I would think.
Well, I, I would assume we're gonna vary three, three of the four lot lines anyway. Special permit, the upstairs?
Well, I would be concerned with the, you know, oh, finding out exactly how much, what that percentage is and how far away from compliance you are is, you know, as far as the square footage goes. You know, if it's, I forget what it has to be off the top of my head.
Off the garage?
Yeah.
Side garage, you want it square?
20%? 30, 30%?
25%.
25%? Is that gonna melt with anybody? No?
What, can't be more than 25% of the living area?
First floor living.
It's, it's a percentage or it's a, can't go above a total.
It can't go above a certain square footage.
Yeah.
I think it's 88.
Yeah.
Or a percentage of it, whichever is larger.
So this is.
Right?
What are you looking at? 25 or what?
50% of ratings?
I thought it was 75.
Yeah. It's possible that, something we could ask for a variance on.
It's 50% of the square footage or.
Yeah, exactly. You don't wanna keep it that big or, or cut it down.
Plus the height, I think it can be taller than the existing home, right?
It will not.
Yes, it will, right.
It'll be taller.
This thing houses a rent. This will have kids. The original intent was to put a second floor on the house. Right, and then add the garage. But, oh, yeah, and then they look at the foundation and half of it's fieldstone or whole.
There's 88.
There's one on.
No, it's 50%.
In the half. That's very similar to what I wanted to do.
Yeah. And what's, the other one there on the corner of Pemberton and, and 11th Avenue? They've got a, they've got a family room above the garage. Right on the corner of my house.
Miles.
Oh, Miles?
Yes, Miles is old. Miles.
Oh, yeah.
And Cafarelli does too, so what I'm getting is that I don't think, you could always explain it wouldn't be detrimental to the established character of the neighborhood.
No, no, because there's a house directly across the street from the.
Cafarelli?
No, it's further down.
Yeah, it can't be below 50% of the living area.
It'll be similar to that.
So he's got 700. He's doing 700. What's the house, 24 by what?
44 by 44.
24 by 48?
44 by 44.
How big would the breezeway?
430.
10 feet.
10 feet?
So he's over 10, 50%?
10 by 16. It's 57 miles.
That's, that's probably good.
Isn't, isn't it 50% of the living area? Can't exceed 50% of the living area?
Well, they'd have to look it up.
Is that without special permits or is that just bottom line?
No, you can't exceed, let's say your, 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 your main house is 1200, what?
32.
1232. 1232, half of that, you can only go half of that.
600.
50%.
600 28. The 188.
You're 750, you're only 100 square foot.
1000?
The 18 inches off the road is bigger than that.
I know, I know.
And 20 by 20.
I've just told you for what the law.
The only other thing is I don't know how many other variants we could have. For an eight-foot variance on the side setback. Side setback. Six feet, eight feet, six feet.
Six feet.
The side of the lot. This is not.
Where it's pre-existing non-conforming. Have you run this by, uh, building inspector?
Teresa? Yes. And I'm in a phone to talk to you guys.
Yeah, well, you'd have to vary it and, and address, you know, address the issues.
Okay.
You know, and, and have, draw up a plan and I would suggest contacting your neighbors, even have something maybe in writing and whatnot that they, they're all good with it. You know.
Before he sells the house.
Yeah. And then take it from there.
Well, I guess my ultimate question is that is 80% or 50% for me, are you guys figuring it out?
Yeah, you have.
Is that just bottom line?
That's what he's looking at. No, you'd have to vary that. That is the bottom line, that's the bylaw, but where this is already a pre-existing non-conforming lot, you can show hardship and that wouldn't be detrimental to the established character of the neighborhood that, and because of the, you know, the, the location of the septic system and whatnot, you know, there's your hardship, you know, you have to, you'd have to present that to the board.
25% floor area.
You know how to do all that stuff.
35%.
Well, I'm trying to save the town money, we're not gonna hit that correct.
That's elsewhere.
No, that can't be right.
That's an accessory builder.
But that's not a garage, it's not a garage, but. Standard garage is 24 by 24.
Ground floor at 884.
You're nothing above the center.
No. You're right.
What is it?
Unless I have a special one, 884.
A maximum of 884?
Which is 24 by 36.
No garage or barn, you want the ground floor area, 884 square feet.
300. You're 75.
Well, we didn't figure the breezeway either.
It's not a garage?
Not a garage.
That's considered separate even though it's dashed?
Okay. That'd make a trouble for yourself. I just want to.
All the rules. What's the breezeway, what's the dimension?
10.
There's a 10.
10 foot wide, 16 foot.
Near than 50 feet from the front lot line.
Right, that would be, you'd have to vary that.
40 feet, 30, you're right, you're right. We should keep this on the table.
Yeah, that's right.
No, no.
I should put that on.
I should put that on.
Okay.
All right, we know where to go. Put the, James and whatnot together, we could pull that up, because I'm just making this. All right?
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for your time, dude.
Let's, uh, let's skip over to, uh, let's skip over to the email from Alan Camol, let's do that. Halifax Trails freeze out in reply to him. What are we doing?
I haven't seen it, and I was told if I come to the meeting, if it comes public, I can.
What do we have?
I'll give you the story.
Sure, let me read it first and then you can give us the story.
He waited all this out for emails, huh?
We're making Twitter.
You're missing what?
What's that?
You said you were missing.
It is email and then my response.
Yeah. Okay, from Alan Camol to the Halifax Trails Company Freeze Out. Lana Snow, dear Arlana, if you would be so kind to reply, you haven't seen us at all, can, uh, we should make, do we have a copy of this for him? If you could get to him.
I was told it wasn't public until you guys started.
Okay, cool. If you would be so kind to reply to the following information with any knowledge you may have on this subject, if you are as much in the dark as I, could you at least explain the process of transferring a townhouse development's ZBA special permit from one company to another? I would deeply appreciate any assistance you can offer me on this matter. I created Halifax Trails Company, Inc., a townhouse development in Halifax, Mass. with the financial help of my eighty-eight-year-old partner, Paul Keating, and his fifty-eight-year-old wife. As president and forty-nine percent shareholder, I found the land, I got all the approvals with the town, I designed the site layout and the townhouses, I built roads and infrastructure. My partner only loaned money and never enough money to work properly. While under construction, my fifty-one percent partner fired me as the president, removed me from, removed me as the director and fired me as the builder slash general manager. This came to a head when I refused to sign for a three-point-two-million-dollar construction loan approved at the Bridgewater Savings Bank until my partner agreed to amend the agreement that he extorted me into signing, which regulated me to, to an employee at will. When I sued him for corporate freeze-out, which is ongoing, he indicated that he wanted to be, be bought out. It is impossible for me to get the funding due to his demand to get upfront one hundred percent of the funds he had loaned, he had loaned to the company. Every lender I spoke with, over forty of them insisted that my partner must leave at least five-hundred-thousand dollars skin in the game and coordinate it to a construction loan. To my shock and horror, five weeks ago, my partner sold all the assets of the company, including the twenty-six acres of land to a real estate broker, Michael Gamaris, Ricochet Enterprises, for a million six-hundred-ninety-thousand dollars with almost no money down and a two-year balloon note at ten percent. He also loaned a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars to this broker to help him get started. This was done in secret, there is absolutely no prior notification on my partner's intention to do this to me, a forty-nine percent shareholder and creator of this development. My partner's attorney, Robert Pellegrini, told my attorney that they didn't tell me about this because, quote, "They knew I would stop it," unquote. Of course I, I would have stopped it. I became aware of the asset sale when I saw the buyer advertising my townhouses for sale on MLS. I couldn't breathe. My partner had offered the same terms to me that he gave to Gamaris. I would have easily financed the project and it would be all built by now. We deposed Michael Gamaris, the buyer, under oath two weeks ago. He was ordered by subpoena to produce all the documents related to the sale of the Halifax Trail assets. He did not produce even one document. Momentarily, he will be getting a judge to compel him to produce the documents. Under oath, Gamaris stated that he was not informed by my partner's attorney, Robert Pellegrini, of my ongoing corporate freeze-out lawsuit against Paul Keating. Gamaris also stated under oath that he had no planned, that he hadn't planned to ask the Halifax zoning board of appeals to transfer the Halifax development approvals to Ricochet Enterprises. He said under oath that he would halt all work on the townhouse, houses development, including the ZBA transfer of the development approvals to Ricochet Enterprise. Gamaris stated under oath that he did not ask Robert Pellegrini for a shareholders' resolution confirming that all the owners of the Halifax Trails Company Incorporated agree, agreed to the sale of the assets. He said attorney Pellegrini told him everything was fine, far from it. Gamaris also stated under oath that he is not a builder or a developer. He said that he usually partners up with a builder developer to get the project built. He said that in this case, up until now, he hasn't been able to find a builder developer yet to partner with him on this development. He also stated under oath that he has not found the funding to build the project. Gamaris clearly misrepresented his intentions and is currently only, only five weeks advertising the entire development for sale on MLS for a million eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand. In the MLS advertisement, Gamaris states that the project is ready for construction to commence immediately. This indicates that Ricochet Enterprises already has the project approvals, however, there is no record of that anywhere. The ZBA has not already agreed to transfer the project approval. Please do not agree to the transfer, it will cause irreputable harm to my family and me. My experience with the Halifax ZBA and all of the other boards during the approval process was wonderful and I grew to love the town and its people. If I had chosen an honest and decent partner, the project would all be built by now with twenty-six families living there and paying taxes. Thank you, Richard Alan Camol. Dear Alan, thank you for your email. At this time, the Halifax zoning board of appeals has not received any information on this matter. The board has had no update on Halifax Trails and no one has come before the board at this time. Because there has been nothing new presented for this development, we cannot comment on any, on how anything would progress. Please feel free to contact me if you have any further questions. Alan, thank you for the information. My question about the process of transferring development special permit approvals did not specific, is not specific to Halifax Trails. Simply asking about procedures in general, please, please advise, thank you. Hi.
How are you?
Good, how you been?
Good, thanks. All right, last time I was before you was, what, a year ago?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I told you that there was a litigation and that Paul Keating owned ninety-nine percent of the company.
Ninety-nine percent?
Yes. And one of the reasons for that, I think he did mention that in his letter, was that he has very bad credit and the corporation couldn't get the funding that it needed to build the project. Without that being the case, so that's pretty typical as far as bank lending goes to corporations, is you can't have a, a partner with a significant amount of interest without, you know, running their credit. So anyway, for whatever reason, it turned out to be ninety-nine percent to one percent ownership and, you know, he's had more than adequate time to try to sell the project. And I told you the last time we were here that at some point we were just gonna have to sell the project, which we've done. The buyer, I have no control over the buyer, I have no idea what he's doing. I'm actually kinda surprised that he hasn't come to the board yet to.
Come to our board?
Yeah, to try to transfer the permits.
What, what's his name?
Mike Gamaris, you are correct. Ricochet.
Enterprise.
Yeah, that's the buyer. During the purchase process, I did go and look at a couple of his other developments and they're very nice, so I had no, you know, personally, I had no doubts about his ability to build out the project. So, you know, not that the board wants to get in the middle of two people fighting, but I have all the funds that have come in, which are very minor, in an escrow account, waiting for the rest of it to come in. They do have an agreement between the two of them and there's.
Between the two of who?
Alan and the partner, the eighty-eight-year-old partner. Again, not really the board's concern, but I'm holding money. It's gonna go exactly the way they agreed for it to go. So just like before, I think there might be an issue with someone having an issue with paranoia and all the last, what, three years, every time we try to do something, he gets in the way. So, yeah, with a ninety-nine percent owner being my client, I took care of the sale and, but it's going exactly per their agreement. Not that the board would ever want to get involved in a litigation, but there's no underhandedness to this at all. The ninety-nine percent owner obviously controls the corporation and sold the property. Our hope, just like it would be with you and everybody else I've talked with at the town, was that the thing get built out and it's, that, I don't know why he hasn't transferred the permits or even made that attempt yet. My only guess is because he's getting subpoenas the day after he purchases the property, I'm not sure I would either.
Is that in litigation now? Is he litigating or just?
Mike Gamaris obviously has no reason to return my calls. I have tried to call.
And certainly not with zoning boards.
Yeah. I mean, I've tried several times, as far as I know, he's not involved in a litigation. I don't, as an attorney, don't know how he could be. He's a completely uninterested, unrelated, third-party bona fide purchaser. Yes, he was told about the litigation, unlike what you heard there. However, he's had plenty of opportunity to get this reviewed by an attorney and I would think any attorney would say, yeah, a ninety-nine percent owner in a corporation can sell the assets of the corporation regardless of what the situation might be between the owners, so. Without getting into it any further, that's just.
Pretty much it?
Yeah. I hope that if he, I hope that he comes to you soon and asks, asks to transfer them. I'd like to see it built. I know a lot of work went into it from a lot of people, your time, everybody else's, should get built. But again, though, you know, if he's got a subpoena and he's being threatened with a lawsuit, I wouldn't necessarily blame him.
All right, so there is, as far as I know, there is no litigation pending, especially that involves the town or the zoning board or anything to that effect?
Aren't they, aren't they living or what, the, the permits is about to expire?
No, we addressed that with the building inspector last year. I sent out a request for determination. He reviewed, there's a letter with a date of.
It was supposed to expire this year, right? The eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen?
No, he wrote a letter.
Yeah, didn't he decide because they built stuff that they'd already started?
Yes, that letter was dated September fifth. He determined that substantially used.
Two thousand what?
In, or in, two thousand seventeen, that it had been exercised, nothing needs to, we don't need to worry about timing it. This was a requirement, by the way, of another potential buyer needed to see that, which is why we requested the determination.
When does it expire?
It doesn't.
Doesn't.
It does.
But he, now it's a new owner, so they would have to transfer it.
They have to transfer it, they can't start anything.
So once it's transferred, there's no expiration date?
No, the only opportunity to appeal the building inspector's termination would have been thirty days from September fifth, two thousand seventeen, long gone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's a, is there a special permit with that?
The building, what?
With the, with the whole property over there?
You're going back years for me, there's, yes, there's special permits, yes, but he determined in this letter that enough work had been done to.
And those can be transferable?
Yeah.
I don't know what else we can do.
I don't know either. I just wanted to come to get a copy of the letter and to at least give you the courtesy of a live explanation.
I mean, we're not, there's nothing in front of us to, to determine as far as she goes or far as they go and they haven't applied for the transfer, so it's kind of an update. Thank you. Thank you.
Glad to be here, you guys.
Yeah. Let's do this again. Thanks, Bob.
Okay, thanks. Take it easy.
That's it. Memo from Charlie Sealy, in-law apartment renewal process.
So this came first, but this is really what matters, so.
From Charlie Sealy, March twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, in-law apartment renewal process. At its meeting on Tuesday, March twentieth, the Halifax board of selectmen reviewed your memo of February twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, asking for comments about the renewal process for a special permit for in-law apartments in Halifax. The board is in favor of having the special permits reviewed underlying every five years instead of being renewed every five years. Thought feels that the logistics of the renewal process, requiring a new application by the permit holder advertising in a local newspaper, notification to a butters in a public area, are more burdensome on both the applicant and the board, then going through a review process. The review process should begin on a date early enough so that you determine that all the permit holder remains in compliance with all the stipulations that were part of the issuance of the special permit. If it is determined that it is not, all the stipulations are being met, the zoning board of appeals can request that the zoning enforcement officer notify the permit holder that the permit holder is not in compliance with the stipulations and give the permit holder a limited period of time to bring the property into compliance, relinquish the special permit, or suffer fines and other penalties. The board did indicate the entirety of this portion of the bylaw should be reviewed, but felt that it could be included in the upcoming work to be done by the zoning bylaw review committee. What is this with it?
Those are actually the ones that are being proposed for the town meeting.
And the in-laws, and they have multiple family lot lines.
It's in there.
Oh, in-law apartments. See if the town meeting will vote to own the amendment, to amend the, the code of the town of Halifax, chapter one sixty-seven seven zoning schedule of use requirements by deleting and adding. And those, that's a proposal. We were the one, we reviewed and submitted this, unless you guys want me to read it out loud.
So now they're gonna.
Re, re, review it.
Re-review it. But it also transfers with a new owner, right?
Special permits for in-law apartments are granted to the applicant and not transferable with the land.
That's, that's what they're going to.
That's, yeah, they're changing it, substituting for, in-law apartments are granted to the property and are transferable with the land.
It's either one or the other, yeah, so I was confused.
So they want to change it so it does, right?
They want to change it to, what did you say?
So they want to change it from.
A not transferable to.
Not transferable to transferable. And they're granted not to the applicant, but to the property. So then everyone just review, reviews it? So when a new buyer comes in, are they gonna know that?
That it's in the.
Are they gonna get like a copy of the decision letter that says all the things that they need to meet? Or are they just gonna get.
If it's transferable.
Three months before their five-year renew.
And if you have a, if you have a new landowner.
Right.
How are they gonna meet the requirements of the previous owner?
How are they gonna know? They're not gonna know.
It's gonna be spelt out, it should be part of the deed.
Is it in there?
But in the same breath, their conditions would be different from the previous owner, so how can, how can they comply?
And then we wouldn't be able to change it, we're just reviewing it, right? Not renewing it? I mean, I guess we can change.
What conditions would be different, you mean, as far as who's living there? Why would the conditions be different from one person to the next? It's the same building.
It should be, but if, like, when we, we knew the new ones now, if there's any changes, as in structural changes or anything that, like, anything like that, if that's transferable to the new owner, they can't change anything.
Well, they can't change anything anyway with a building permit, right?
Correct.
So they would have to come to the town, or supposed to come to the town anyway, yeah, for, for any changes anyway. But when we take conditions out the same, would it be like?
Transferable. Or couldn't be transferable.
They have to go in front of the board for a transfer, for a transfer, right? They don't have to come.
Now it's a property.
I would, the problem is, it, they should. Not, right now it is, but the changes.
Right.
That it wouldn't, you wouldn't have.
But they would, because it's not transferable and they, if they make it transferable.
So, I think it's just making it illegal apartment. It's making it illegal apartment with a new owner.
Yeah.
Right? If you, if you have an in-law apartment right now, the way this is right now, is I, I don't think you could advertise it as an in-law apartment because you don't know if the town's gonna transfer it for you. But by making it transferable, now you can advertise it when you were to sell it as an in-law apartment.
Yeah.
Kinda makes sense.
Yeah, it does.
Okay. We good?
It, it actually says that he has to go in and inspect it too on the, the reviews and stuff, so it's probably, it's probably easier that way.
All right. Cool.
This is passed, but, I don't know.
What's this one?
It's the old collie thing, but it's March twentieth, so.
The agenda? Okay, yeah, enclosed, everyone who wants to see it, it is accessible. Memo to the zoning board from Charlie, zoning bylaw proposals for the annual meetings, is that the one we just did?
Yep, that's the one that you just said.
Okay, it's the same one. Deutsch Williams notice of withdrawal and notice of appearance regarding Gordon Andrews. Trade you? Fifty-fifty. Oh, my God, what are they doing?
So they're just, um, they're forming a new law practice, since Deutsch Williams is no longer. So those two, um, suits, selection suits, are going to be going with Kim Salant. And another lawyer who can't more than me, that's in there somewhere.
So the case is still going on?
Oh, it's a no of, it's a no of withdrawal as Deutsch Williams and then a notice of opinions for the new one. Oh, okay.
So it's just kind of informed us.
All right.
And that will continue.
Yes, and on we go. Deutsch Williams joint with notice of withdrawal, town of Halifax, file to the building inspector, Robert Gru, same one?
Yep.
Okay, uh, email, we did the email, oh, wow, we are flying. And memo from the board of health, Nova Machines and Design.
Kathy Drayman gave us that, um, a little delay, because she gave to us last week, but it was concern that the board of health has with Nova Machine.
To Robert Gaynor, chairman Halifax zoning board of appeals regarding Nova Machine and Design. Dear Chairman Gaynor, I apologize for the delay in commenting on this. The board of health was not able to have its last couple of meetings. Last night's meeting, the board discussed this and they were concerned about what cutting fluids that are used for this kind of business, they would like to see in writing what he, what he, business owner's plan is for storing, handling, and disposing of the cutting fluid as it is critical to keep them out of the septic system. If this is too late for this comment to your board, please let me know and I will ask the business owners. Well, educate us.
Mostly what they use is a water soluble, water soluble coolant. We did discuss this, they, we did. They, they did say they were gonna store their waste coolant in barrels inside, if you remember that. We did talk, in fact, I think it's in the minutes, actually.
I gave her a copy of our minutes.
Okay, was, wasn't it in the minutes? I believe it was.
Something kind of touching on it.
Something, we touched on the subject. Now, by law, they have to get a waste disposal company to come in and pump those barrels out. I mean, unless you have an evaporator, right? What else are you gonna do?
What are they doing in the industrial park?
Right, I'm assuming they do the same thing, right?
Yeah, it's no difference. There's this introduction.
They just move from one place to another.
I mean, one of those machines is gonna hold forty gallons of coolant. So, when you have to change up that coolant, you're not gonna dump it on the same, you know? You have to do something with it. And they have nine machines, which will have anywhere from twenty to forty gallons.
Nine machines? Is that what you said?
They have like four or five mils, four or five liters, something like that, yeah.
Each with how many?
Forty.
They're gonna be anywhere from twenty to forty gallons in each machine of water soluble coolant. Generally, if you're doing high machining, it just, really where it goes is in the lungs. I'm eating most of it. But it really goes, mostly gets evaporated. But if the machine's sitting for a long time, it gets rank. You know, there's things you can do. You put aerators in there and it keeps it fresh, kind of like a fish tank.
This is something we should be contacting the owner to find out?
Um, the board of health, let them contact, I think, right? If they're concerned about it. I mean, I, I think what Cy said is correct. What do you do now?
I mean, they should already have that in their files, some existing...
Right, right. What they do now is exactly that.
They were before, they were there before, you know? They were doing it before.
Sure, exactly.
In the town of Halifax, so they must have knowledge of what they were doing.
Yeah, because we've ordered and granted this already.
I mean, it's a minor concern. It's not, I mean, it's not a major concern.
I didn't know if he wanted me to respond or...
Yeah, how about a letter from the board? What do you guys think? How about something to the effect that, dear Kathy Draynan, upon the board's review of the application, it was determined that there wouldn't be any significant change in the waste disposal coolants generated by the nine machines that are gonna be existing in the new structure?
Approximately.
Approximately, nine machines. We were informed that the disposal fluids would be picked up, stored in barrels, and removed from the property as required by state law. Any specifics and details for further involving the containing and disposal of the fluids should be determined by your board, you know? I don't know, anyone, anything else?
Yeah, just, again, it should be the existing conditions they have and they plan now. There's nothing different than what they're doing.
The existing conditions should be compliant with state requirements where they are currently located up in the industrial park in Halifax. Something like that?
Yeah, that's good.
Anything else you want to add in there?
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, I mean, just talking with them, they, you know, they should be able to show that they properly dispose of their waste coolants and their waste oils with a certified company.
Should you have any further questions, please contact our officers.
Yeah, I know what I'm saying.
Earliest convenience.
Okay.
All right, good. All right. That's memo from the planning board. Planning board notice of public hearing for five three, two thousand eighteen, amendment to one sixty-seven seven, multi-family. The Halifax Planning Board will hold a public meeting on Thursday, May third, two thousand eighteen, at six forty PM in the selectmen's meeting room, first floor of the town hall, four ninety-nine Plymouth Street in Halifax, on the following articles to see if the town will vote to amend the code of the town of Halifax, chapter one sixty-seven sixteen, zoning estate lots by deleting the following. The planning board is the SPGA. Each submission to the board should and will be considered on its own merit and specific applicability. The plans generated for consideration should strictly adhere to the criteria set forth for plans not requiring approval, section two thirty-five dash six of the Halifax Code. Said proposed changes are on file with the clerk's office, town of Halifax Town Hall, four ninety-nine Plymouth Street in Halifax. Know what it said, but advertise in the Plymouth Halifax Express on Friday, April thirteenth, and Friday, April twentieth. Cool.
This is one sixty-seven seven. This is the marijuana one. They want to change it for the business district.
What?
Yeah, the marijuana establishment.
That's one sixty-seven six. I'm being, I'm banning that.
Oh, I just wrote it down.
Yeah. She's been sampling. He's saying nothing, nothing at all.
Do you want me to read this in there also?
Yeah.
The Halifax Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May third, two thousand eighteen, at seven fifty PM in the selectmen's meeting room, first floor of the town hall, four ninety-nine Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. On the following articles to see if the town will vote to amend the code of the town of Halifax, chapter one sixty-seven seven, zoning schedule of use regulation, marijuana establishment, to make the following change, to allow marijuana establishments by special permit from the board of appeals in the business slash commercial district. Said proposed changes are on file with the town clerk's office, town of Halifax, Halifax Town Hall, four ninety-nine Plymouth Street in Halifax. So, we would be granting marijuana...
Yeah, so they want us to make the decisions on whether or not I can go next to Subway. That's gonna be a fun meeting.
There you go.
Second floor of Main Street in Broad. Don't worry about it.
Yeah, all those are paid. Okay, other business?
Um, just, do you think I should send that back or do you want that?
Anybody want to take a look at this? This has been sent forward to the board for consideration to see if we want to buy that for, what is it? Hundred seventy-nine dollars? It's a Massachusetts land court reporter. I really don't, other than...
It would be good.
What our attorneys would be handling. I don't know really what maybe they need that. Anybody feel that...
July.
Anybody feel that we, we need that or do you want to skip over it?
Does that come out of the van budget?